Charlie, remote at this point, so I'll call the meeting to order. First, let's stand and pledge allegiance, please.
... of the United States of America. A look for which is one nation, God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Any agenda changes, Kathy? Okay, no agenda review. Next item is acceptance of the two sets of minutes that we have. The first is the minutes for the academic affairs committee meeting on February 8th. By Tim, by Wendy. Okay, the members of that committee, all those in favors?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Krista, Tim, and Wendy. Thank you. Next item is the minutes of the school board meeting from February 8th. By Tim, seconded by Wendy. A roll call. Krista?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Wendy?
Yes.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Darlene?
Dana?
Yes.
And chair votes, I as well. And next item on the agenda is the calendar.
Okay, the school calendar that was presented previously was based on the state calendar. The state has just changed its calendar because the week that they had for February vacation, or for the winter vacation, was February 21st to the 25th, which is also the same as vacation in Massachusetts. So, they have changed their calendar to the first week of March. The schools around the district are also changing their calendars, and so I think for families and teachers, it would be best if we had consistent calendars with the district around us. So, that's why we're presenting this change tonight.
Okay, any questions on the change on the calendar? Seeing none, do have a motion to accept the calendar for the 21-22 school year as revised.
Moved.
Moved by Jim Pittman. Seconded by Wendy. Okay, any other comments on the calendar?
Cancel using another day. Anywhere, anywhere.
I don't think so, Tim. We may still have some snow days too, but those will be remote, so I guess that won't matter. But, at this point, I think, you know, the students have been out of school so much that I hate to cut back on a day.
This is days.
This is based on days.
How many days is?
You never have gone.
It's a 180-day calendar.
Yep, 180-day calendar.
Okay, 'cause our first 180?
Yes.
Okay, as, okay, good.
Anything else on the calendar?
Good revisit. First day clock.
Well, I think, I think you did decide that the first snow weather day that we needed to cancel would be a snow day, not a remote learning day. I believe you did.
Yes.
Well, we could revisit.
You could? Mm-hmm.
Because if we had like hurricane days?
Oh.
Hello? So, if we had hurricane or something out of the norm in September, October prior to winter?
Right, if we had emergency days, then, you know, we might want to waive those days. But, we'd have to see when the time comes.
And in that case, look at hours?
Yes.
That what you do?
Yes.
All right. Yes, Jim?
Sort of a trivial question with the snow day thing, but, you know, sometimes these early storms we have turn out to be like freezing rain, and like nobody's gonna go out and snowmen. I just wonder if we want to have some flexibility of what's gonna be a snow day, though we don't have people, as they said, in a circumstance like that. Yeah, you know, school, but we can't go outside and play. What I'm saying?
Well, I'd love to have one day that I could just do a surprise snow day. That would be a lot of fun, to be able to do that.
I think the reason why we made the motion because is that we did a remote day because the governor suggested to do, go out and fun, but I, you know, I agree with you, Jim, because we just, what if it's raining or snowing and the kids can't go out? And I, we just did that.
Well, we just, we just did it because I was able to, given our conversation, and the snow was just great that day.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you.
Oh, my gosh.
Did it recently, so.
And I have to tell you, the parents sent me kids pictures of their children playing in the snow, or playing in the snow with them. It was, it was great. It was great to see those pictures.
But I think to Jim's point, far as, you know, potentially we're gonna have a day, the first snow day, not really a good day for kids to go out and make snowmen.
Right.
And just kind of enjoy it.
Right. So, so, if I can just summarize to make sure I'm clear, what you're suggesting is that the snow day for children not to be remote, but to go out in the snow, would be called on a day when we knew the weather conditions were right for playing out in the snow? Is that?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
Exactly.
A little more flexibility.
Not like the snow game we had yesterday where it was like, hey, nice sleep.
Right, well, like this last one would not have been a great fun snow day for kids. I was thinking about that as I was looking out and making the call, thinking if this, you know, if this were the first storm, it wouldn't be really great for kids and families. So, I like the idea.
So, maybe just that statement could just be changed, give you that flexibility. And I don't know if we need to vote, because I think the original vote was for the first snow day to actually be a no. No, school, not, not.
You would, you'd have to, you'd have to make a motion to change that.
I don't know if that would come before we decide, because there's a motion on the floor as far as the calendar, and then we.
We already voted.
Well, I guess we'd, I'd ask you to rescind your motion to approve the calendar temporarily, and then we'll redo that, and we'll vote to change our, our vote on the snow day.
Just to allow.
Well, I will withdraw my motion.
Okay. So, the motion for approving the calendar has been withdrawn at this point, so I'd entertain a different motion if somebody would like to make.
Okay. Go ahead.
Can't hear her.
And maybe, I don't know what the, maybe we, I don't know, turn Kathy's tablet to face the speakers, I don't know, but I'm only getting about every other word that everybody's saying.
Okay. Can you hear me okay?
I can hear you fine now.
Okay. All right, Kathy turned you a little bit toward the rest of the board at this point. All the board is on one side of the table, so that might work a little bit better for you.
Oh, great, I can hear you very well now, thank you.
Okay, so, what, do we have a motion?
My move to make the, are we calling it a snow day? What are we actually calling it? A no-school day?
Yeah, it just says first cancellation.
First cancellation based on weather at the discretion of the superintendent.
One allowed no day without.
So, there would be one snow day at the discretion of the superintendent contingent upon weather?
Perfect. Linda's gonna get all let down, I'm sure. Okay, so, Jim made the motion, and Tim seconded it. Okay, did you get that, Charlie? Do you know what we're voting on?
Nope.
Nope, here, let me, let me summarize. We're voting on making what was formerly the first snow day of snow cancellation, a snow day, but Jim Pittman brought up the point that not every first cancellation is a great day for the kids to be out in the snow playing, and so he made the motion to leave that up to the discretion of the superintendent contingent upon weather. And the February vacation week is moved to the first week of March to coincide with the districts around us.
Thank you.
Charlie in remote at this point, so I'll call the meeting to order. First, let's stand and pledge allegiance, please.
Flag of the United States of America. A look for which is one nation, God invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Any agenda changes, Kathy? Okay, no agenda review. Next item is acceptance of the two sets of minutes that we have. The first is the minutes for the academic affairs committee meeting on February 8th. By Tim, by Wendy. Okay, the members of that committee, all those in favors?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Krista, Tim, and Wendy, thank you. Next item is the minutes of the school board meeting from February 8th. By Tim, seconded by Wendy, a roll call, Krista?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Wendy? Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Charlene? Dana?
Yes.
And chair votes aye as well. And next item on the agenda is calendar.
Okay, the school calendar that was presented previously was based on the state calendar. The state has just changed its calendar because the February, the week that they had for February vacation, or for the winter vacation was February 21st to the 25th, which is also the same as vacation in Massachusetts. So, they have changed their calendar to the first week of March. The schools around the district are also changing their calendars, and so I think for families and teachers, it would be best if we had consistent calendars with the district around us. So, that's why we're presenting this change tonight.
Okay, any questions on the change on the calendar? Seeing none, do I have a motion to accept the calendar for the 2122 school year as revised? Moved by Jim Pittman. Seconded by Wendy. Okay, any other comments on the calendar?
Cancel using another day. Anywhere, anywhere.
I don't think so, Tim. We may still have some snow days too, but those will be remote, so I guess that won't matter. But at this point, I think, you know, the students have been out of school so much that I hate to cut back on a day.
This is days.
This is based on days.
How many days is? We never have gone.
It's a 180-day calendar.
Yep, 180-day calendar.
Okay, 'cause so our first 180?
Yes.
Okay, as, okay, good.
Anything else on the calendar?
Good revisit. First day clock.
Well, I think, I think you did decide that the first snow weather day that we needed to cancel would be a snow day, not a remote learning day. I believe you did.
Yes.
But we could revisit.
You could.
Because if we had like hurricane day.
Oh.
Yep.
Yeah.
Hello?
So if we had hurricane or something out of the norm in September, October prior to winter.
Right, if we had emergency days, then, you know, we might want to waive those days. But we'd have to see when the time comes.
And in that case, look at hours.
Yes.
At what you do.
Yes.
All right.
Yes, Jim.
Sort of a trivial question with the snow day thing, but, you know, sometimes these early storms we have turn out to be like freezing rain and like nobody's gonna go out and snowmen. I just wonder if we want to have some flexibility of what's gonna be a snow day? So we don't have people, as they said, in a circumstance like that. Yeah, you know, school, but we can't go outside and play. What I'm saying?
Well, I'd love to have one day that I could just do a surprise snow day. That would be a lot of fun, to be able to do that.
I think the reason why we made the motion because is that we did a remote day because the governor suggested to do, go out and fun. But I, you know, I agree with you, Jim, because we just but if it's raining or snowing and the kids can't go out and I we just did that.
Well, we just, we just did it because I was able to, given our conversation, and the snow was just great that day.
I was gonna say you
Oh, my gosh.
Did it recently, so.
And I have to tell you, the parents sent me kids pictures of their children playing in the snow or playing in the snow with them. It was, it was great. It was great to see those pictures.
But I think to Jim's point far as, you know, potentially we're gonna have a day, the first snow day, not really a good day for kids to go out and make snowmen.
Right.
Right.
And just kind of enjoy it.
Right, so, so if I can just summarize to make sure I'm clear, what you're suggesting is that the snow day for children not to be remote, but to go out in the snow would be called on a day when we knew the weather conditions were right for playing out in the snow? Is that?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
Exactly.
A little more flexibility.
Not like the snow day we had yesterday where it was like, hey, nice sleep.
Right, well, like this last one would not have been a great fun snow day for kids. I was thinking about that as I was looking out and making the call, thinking if this, you know, if this were the first storm, it wouldn't be really great for kids and families. So, I like the idea.
So maybe just that statement could just be changed, give you that flexibility. And I don't know if we
Well, I was gonna say, we made, we made a motion.
The original vote was for the first snow day. No school, not, not real.
You would, you'd have to, you'd have to make a motion to change that.
I don't know if that would come before we decide, because there's a motion on the floor as far as the calendar, and then we
Well, I guess we'd, I'd ask you to rescind your motion to approve the calendar temporarily, and then we'll redo that and we'll vote to change our, our vote on the snow day.
Just to allow
Well, I will withdraw my motion.
Okay, so the motion for approving the calendar has been withdrawn at this point. So I entertain a different motion if somebody would like to make. Okay, go ahead.
Can't hear her.
And maybe, I don't know what the, maybe we, I don't know, turn Kathy's tablet to face the speakers, I don't know. But I'm only getting about every other word that everybody's saying.
Okay, can you hear me okay?
I can hear you fine now.
Okay, all right, Kathy turned you a little bit toward the rest of the board at this point. All the board is on one side of the table, so that might work a little bit better for you.
Oh, great, I can hear you very well now, thank you.
Okay, so what, do we have a motion?
My move to make the, this, are we calling it a snow day? What are we actually calling it? A no-school day?
It just says first cancellation.
First cancellation based on weather at the discretion of the superintendent.
One allowed no day without
So there would be one snow day at the discretion of the superintendent contingent upon weather?
Perfect.
Linda's gonna get all let down, I'm sure. Okay, so Jim, Jim made the motion and Tim seconded it? Okay, did you get that, Charlie? Do you know what we're voting on?
Nope.
Nope, here, let me, let me summarize. We're voting on making what was formerly the first snow day of a snow cancellation, a snow day. But Jim Pittman brought up the point that not every first cancellation is a great day for the kids to be out in the snow playing. And so he made the motion to leave that up to the discretion of the superintendent contingent upon weather. And the February vacation week is moved to the first week of March to coincide with the districts around us.
Thank you.
Okay, any other input on that? Okay, then all in favor of the motion to change the wording on the snow day? Krista?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Wendy?
Yes.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Charlene? Dana?
Yes.
And chair votes aye as well. Okay, now I entertain a motion to go, to approve the calendar with the change in the snow day as previously voted on.
Can I ask one question?
Go ahead.
If we, if we looked at this calendar as we've done in previous years, or, or not every year, but some years, if we looked at it strictly as ours, where would that put us for the, like, the last day? Because as it stands, the last day would be that Monday, the 20th.
Yeah.
And if we're having a snow day, that would bump us out to the 21st.
I would have to do the calculations on that. We always exceed the number of hours that the state requires, and we have ever since that went into effect. And we've tried not to reduce the amount of instructional time. So I could do that calculation.
Well, I'm just wondering, got that hangup, just because I know, you know, summer's kind of well underway by that last week of June. Camps are open. Kids have checked out, staff have checked out. I mean, obviously, they would come if we're having school. But if we could look at somehow getting it to the 17th as that last day.
Well, if we have a snow day, it's gonna be the 21st, so then we'd be looking at two days.
Right, and I don't know if, if with hours, that would buy us enough to get us to Friday, the 7th.
If you wanted to reduce the instructional time.
Yeah, 'cause, I mean, right now, we have built in additional hours of instructional time within the 180-day calendar. If we reduce the 180-day calendar, then obviously we're reducing the instructional time for the students.
Two days, or a day and a
Right.
So not knowing as far as the hour in I'm guessing if you look at it as six hours a day.
Well, you have, the calculation's much more complicated than that.
Okay.
And I have the calculations in my office about how much, you know, because you have to figure in recess and lunch, and so it's a little bit more complex. You know, if, if you wanted to table the calendar, we can do that, and I can look at hours. I just, I just worry about our students losing instructional time. I, you know, and some, one of the days has to be the last day, so.
And I, I would, my two cents is we've been at 180, 177. And we haven't gotten to 180 yet. And for me, I'm, I mean, my personal, I know, I emphasize the thing is we're finally at, we've made it to 180. Like, that's how it is a pain to get it for that Monday. All of those things. I'm going, oh, 180 finally versus the hours.
Yeah, I think we've, we've always, you know, traditionally, it's been 180 days, you know, for, for a long time, and then we've modified that off and on. I think it's important, based on where we are this year and the instructional time that the students have had this year, that we provide as much instructional time next year as possible. So, I mean, I'd be in favor of keeping the 180, certainly for next year. The following calendar year, if we do something different and shorten up the last day, that's fine, but I think we're, because we're going through everything this year. I don't want to even take it an hour away.
Okay.
Okay, based on that conversation, all those in favor of approving the calendar as presented, again, with the change in the snow day with the superintendent's discretion, all those in favor? Krista?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Wendy?
Aye.
Jim Pittman?
Aye.
Charlene?
Charlene?
Charlene, you in favor of the calendar, Charlene?
I'm sorry, my microphone was muted. Aye.
Okay, and chair votes aye as well. Okay, thank you for that. We are now on to the policies.
Yes, we have a bunch to do second read tonight for approval. Um, do you want me to do, I'll do each individual for approval versus
Yeah, I think it's easier that way because they're different.
Yep, big difference. So the first one for second read is BEA regarding the, you know, the board meetings that we hold and just really going through what, what the expectation is of what will be decided and discussed and included in, in that meeting. We made some little tweaks here and there. But if I have a motion to approve BEA as submitted for second read for approval?
They're moved. Okay, it's been moved by Tim, seconded by Krista. What, just one quick question on the very first paragraph where it says
Um, yes.
Regular meetings of the government, with regional school board may be held at a public location or a public, should there be a?
I think, I think we turned it into a public location because Brookfield
But shouldn't we have the word "a" in there?
See, it, it's, it's
Oh, I see it.
It's really close.
I'm sorry, it's
Well, it's just kind of
I missed it, I missed it, it's right after the word. Got it, you probably got it, thank you. Okay, no, the rest of it is fine the way it is. Any, any other comments on BEA? Hey, all those in favor, are you okay with that, Charlene?
Yes, right.
Okay, okay, all those in favor? Krista?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Wendy?
Yes.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Charlene? Dana?
Yes.
And chair votes aye as well, okay.
Okay, so the second policy to bring forward for approval tonight is GCG. It's regarding part-time substitute staffing, as you know, just due to the pandemic, we've had some, you know, tough, trying to get substitutes and just kind of reformatting that, you know, everyone does go through a background check and is entered into the database and what the expectation is for reference and background check and just cleaning that up for part-time substitution. So if I could bring forward GCG for approval?
And this, Wendy, this would also include, we can include these together, GCGR
Oh, yep.
And GCGR2, which are the regulations?
Correct, thank you, Jack.
Yep, so GCG, GCG, and GCGR and GCR2 are what we're looking for a motion for.
Correct.
They're moved.
Okay, moved by Tim, seconded by Jim Pittman. Any questions on the GCG policies or regulations?
Long overdue.
Long overdue, exactly, thank you, appreciate that. Okay, all those in favor? Krista?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Wendy?
Yes.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Charlene? Dana?
Yes.
Chair votes aye as well, okay.
Okay, the next one is JLDB, and this is suicide prevention and response. We do certainly have a curriculum and is discussed previously, but due to state mandate, we do have to have a written policy on that. So we're incorporating the policy based on statute. So again, once again, it's JLDB for second read for approval.
They're moved.
Okay, moved by Tim, seconded by Dana. Dana? Okay, any questions on policy JLDB? Okay, all those in favor? Krista?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Wendy?
Yes.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Charlene? Dana? And chair votes aye as well, okay.
Okay, the next is EBBCF, and it's regarding, this again is for the second read and approval for the board, and it is regarding travel guidelines for employees and essential and non-essential for at-risk travel. And it's based certainly due to the COVID-19 pandemic and following the CDC guidelines as recommended. So, once again, I'd like to make a motion to approve the policy EBBCF as approved for second read.
They're moved by Tim, seconded by Jim Pittman. Okay, any, any comments or questions on EBBCF? Temporary emergency policy travel guidelines for employees, essential and non-essential? Yep? Yep, we will do that. Okay, great. Okay, any other input on EBBCF? Okay, all those in favor? Krista?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Wendy?
Yes.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Charlene? Dana?
Yes.
And chair votes aye as well, excellent.
Okay, the next one for second read and approval is EBCF. It's regarding the pandemic epidemic emergencies. And this was just a little housekeeping that we had to achieve to, once again, just includes the COVID-19 pandemic. So once again, I would like a motion to approve EBCF as presented for second read.
They're moved.
They're moved by Tim, seconded by Jim Pittman. Okay, any, any questions or comments on EBCF? Okay, hearing none. Krista?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Wendy?
Yes.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Charlene? Dana?
Yes.
Chair votes aye as well.
Okay, and the final is for first read tonight as policy BEDH. It's regarding public participation at the board meetings. Once again, it's just for the first read, so certainly if anyone would like to look at it, review, send any changes to Heather.
This is the first read, and basically the only change that I see is public input maybe is, or instead of will be
Yep.
And public input will not exceed 15 minutes unless extended by the vote of the board, which is a, which is good. And then the, also, the speakers will be asked to give their name and their town of residence.
Correct.
Those are really the only changes.
Yeah, those are the only minimum.
This is the first reading, so we don't need a motion on this for this meeting. Okay, excellent.
And that's all I have, Jack.
Excellent, thank you, Wendy. Okay, and that, that concludes our, our regular board meeting. I would entertain a motion to go into non-public under RSA 91A, semicolon, 3, paragraph 2, for a student and legal matter.
They're moved.
Hey, Jim, I saw Jim Pittman's hand up first, so we'll get him in the motion. All right, hey, you know, it is what it is. Tim, second, all right, going to non-public. Krista?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Wendy?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Charlene? Dana?
Yes.
And chair votes aye as well. So we are in non-public, thank you.